Recording in progress.
Good evening and welcome to the Lewisville, Colorado Planning Commission Meeting of March thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. With a roll call, please.
Krishna Mahaly.
President.
Krishna Choi.
Here.
Krishna Baskett.
Present.
Krishna O'lane.
Here.
Krishna Bangs.
Here.
Krishna Hunt.
Here.
Chebra Nice.
Here. Thank you. Motion to approve this evening's agenda?
So moved?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries and no minutes. Do we have anybody? We see a number of you online, approximately ten people online and growing. Does anybody want to speak for something that's not on this evening's agenda? You can use the raise hand function if you're participating by phone, star nine. Seeing no activity there. We'll move into our first item of new business. I will now open the hearing on a request for a planned unit development amendment for King Supers Marketplace. The purpose of the hearing is to receive evidence regarding the application materials and provide a public forum for all interested parties who wish to comment on this request before the planning commission. Procedure for the public hearing will be as follows. First, there'll be a presentation and testimony by city staff, followed by questions from the planning commission to staff. Next, we'll have a presentation and testimony by the applicant, followed by questions from the planning commission to the applicant. After these two, after these two presentations, members of the public who have joined this meeting, in person, by computer, or telephone, may speak regarding the application. Anyone who would like to speak in person is asked to complete a speaker card, use the raise hand function of participating by computer, or star nine if calling in by telephone. Please limit your comments to three minutes per person. Two people present at the meeting may pool their minutes to allow one person to speak for up to a total of six minutes. The purpose of public comment is to receive public testimony and not a forum for debate or dialogue. Commenters are encouraged to raise pertinent issues and may ask questions for clarity. However, these questions will not be directly answered during the public comment period. The applicant staff will then be allowed to make a closing statement. I will then close the public hearing and no further testimony or other evidence will be received unless the commission decides to reopen the hearing. The planning commission will discuss the matter and may approve, approve with conditions, deny, table, or continue to a future meeting. Public hearings are recorded for the public record. All testimony must be presented after stating your full name and city of residence. Does anyone participating in this hearing object to the procedure I've described? Seeing no objections. Do we have notification?
Notice has been satisfied.
Thank you. Do any planning commissioners have disclosures? Seeing none.
Great. All right. Thank you, commissioners. Good to see you all again. Matt Post, planner on the community development team. The item before you tonight is resolution number three, series twenty twenty-five, recommending approval of a planned unit development amendment to allow a grocery store and gasoline service station use at one one seven one West Dillon Road. So as mentioned, the application is for a planned unit development amendment to allow a modification to the existing building and site at one one seven one West Dillon Road to allow a grocery store and accessory, an accessory gasoline service station use. The property is in the area known as Centennial Valley. The subject site is thirteen point five acres in size and located along the McAsland corridor in between Dillon Road and Centennial Parkway on the east, I'm sorry, the west side of McAsland. There are four public streets that bound the site and there are seven different access points to this particular site from four different public streets. There are also four commercial pads that are directly east of this site, also part of the larger Centennial Valley General Development Plan that we'll talk about later. A bit of background here, the site was originally developed in nineteen ninety-six as part of the Centennial Valley Parcel L Planned Unit Development, which resulted in the construction of the existing building and site improvements. The site was occupied at the time by Eagle Hardware, if you all recall that, from nineteen ninety-six to two thousand and one. Lowe's Home Improvement Stores acquired Eagle in nineteen ninety-nine, and in two thousand and one, a PUD amendment was submitted to the city and approved that modified some portions of the building and the site to accommodate a new Lowe's Home Improvement Store. Lowe's occupied that site from two thousand and one, or that PUD amendment in two thousand and one until twenty twenty-two, when they ceased operations and relocated to Erie. The site has been vacant since twenty twenty-two. So continuing on with background, and the site is in the planned community commercial zone district and subject to the Centennial Valley General Development Plan. The Centennial Valley GDP was originally approved in the early nineteen eighties and has undergone multiple amendments since then, the most recently relevant of which was in twenty fifteen. General Development Plan defines land uses and densities within the planning area, and most of the remaining undeveloped land within the Centennial Valley GDP, the larger Centennial Valley area, is designated for office, research, and corporate office development. The existing commercial building on the site is just over a hundred and fifty thousand square feet in size and currently includes five hundred and fourteen parking spaces. There are two detention areas that you can see on the graphic on screen, one on the north side of the site, one on the south side of the site directly adjacent to the parking lots. The site is currently improved with pedestrian walkways that access the building from the parking lot and the surrounding pedestrian network and some landscaping that has survived the vacancy of the building since twenty twenty-two. So as part of this application, the applicant is proposing to demolish a portion of the south side of the existing building. That demolition and renovation would accommodate a new curbside grocery pickup area and a pharmacy drive-through area, which would include parking spaces, a vehicle queuing lane for the drive-through pharmacy pickup and pedestrian walkways and landscape improvements. You can see the curbside customer pickup and the pharmacy drive-through highlighted in yellow. That's the project area for the building renovation. As accessory to the grocery store use and the renovations proposed onsite, the applicant is proposing a gasoline service station just east of the building on the south side of the site. Approvements related to the gasoline service station use include a fueling canopy and kiosk and five pump islands with a total of ten gasoline service pumps. Again, you can see the project area and the area of disturbance for the proposed gasoline service station highlighted in blue on the graphic on the screen. Quick note, your staff packet indicates the canopy as proposed is fifty-four hundred square feet in size. The actual proposed size is just under, just over, under four thousand. There was a change in the canopy size between the first and second PUD submittal. That was my mistake. I put the wrong canopy size in there. So again, just under four thou, just under four thousand square feet is the proposed canopy size as of right now. Your staff report says fifty-four hundred. The gasoline service station is permitted as an automobile service station use in the underlying PCZDC Zone District, and as such, it is considered a by right use. We'll, we'll discuss that further in the slides here, and a special review use is not required for the gasoline service station in the PCZDC Zone District. Again, we'll cover that in later detail in the analysis section. The applicant is proposing four hundred and forty-eight vehicle parking spaces. That is a reduction from the existing five hundred and fourteen spaces onsite, and that would largely be due to the addition of the gasoline service station that's proposed onsite. In addition to the vehicle parking spaces, there are twenty-three bicycle parking spaces that are proposed. Staff will continue to work with the applicant to ensure that those bicycle parking spaces are proposed in reasonable locations around the site. So moving into the analysis section here, staff reviewed our commercial development design standards and guidelines for conformance. We reviewed the municipal code general regulations. Those general regulations contain the supplemental standards applicable to gasoline service stations. We'll discuss that in more detail, and then, of course, the planned unit development review criteria for the PUD amendment proposed. So as discussed here, grocery store use is permitted in the PC, in the planned community commercial district as a retail business, and so we'll consider a grocery store a retail business. Under that same provision of the municipal code that allows the grocery stores a retail business in that planned community district, a gasoline service station is permitted as an automobile service station in the district. Although a special review use is not required, the gasoline service station that's proposed is still subject to those prescribed supplemental standards that would apply to all gasoline service stations citywide, and so again, it is a use by right, not a special review use in this particular zone district. The supplemental standards for gasoline service stations limit the number of gasoline service, service stations in the city to six. There are currently five operational gasoline service stations in the city. There are the Murphys and the Conoco that are off McAsland directly adjacent to the subject site, the Seven Eleven off Ninety-Sixth, and then the Valero, and an additional King Supers fueling station on South Boulder Road. So again, five operational stations. You can see the proposed fueling service station in yellow. The proposed gasoline service station would bring the total number of stations in the city to six, which is in line with the required cap on gasoline service stations. Again, we have that cap of six. We do have an allowance for seven. If a gasoline service station is proposed as accessory to a single-use retailer with a principal structure greater than, greater than eighty thousand square feet, that would apply here if we were already at six, but again, we're at five right now, so this, this particular gasoline service station would be number six. Those supplemental standards also require a minimum spacing of one thousand feet between gas stations. However, the spacing requirement may be waived when that fueling station is proposed as accessory, again, to a single-use retail center that's greater than eighty thousand square feet in size. So this particular, the proposal with the proposed demolition, the building is over a hundred and thirty thousand square feet in size, so they exceed the eighty thousand square foot single-use retail requirement, and as such, they are exempt from the minimum buffer standard, that one thousand-foot requirement. So if you're curious, the Murphys at five twenty-five South McAsland Boulevard and the Conoco at five-ten South McAsland Boulevard are both within one thousand feet of the gasoline service station as of right now, but again, that exception applies because it is accessory to that eighty thousand square foot retail center. In addition to those standards, the establishment of a gasoline service station requires the installation of level three or better electric vehicle charging stations in an amount equal to twenty percent of the total gasoline service pumps that are proposed onsite. As of now, the applicant is proposing ten service pumps. They would be required to provide two electric vehicle charging stations. I believe their plans at the moment show three. I think they've indicated a desire to just provide two. That would, if they want to go with two, at some point here, they would be able to do that. It would be in line with the actual requirement. They would be at the twenty percent standard. I'll let the applicant cover that in their presentation. They are here tonight, but they're online. Moving on with additional analysis, the applicant intends, this would be some architectural design of the existing building here. Again, this is the adaptive reuse of the existing building onsite. The applicant intends to paint the existing split face CMU block material a muted natural color, which aligns with the standards in our commercial design standards. The applicant will also be modifying the building facade to include architecturally enhanced pilasters on the south and east sides of the building. You can see the, the two elevations here with the pilasters added. The modifications will also include an enhanced storefront system that will be constructed within the existing entrance, so it'll create a strong focal point and contrast with the existing and surrounding wall plane, helping come into compliance with the commercial design standards. Again, there's an analysis in your staff packet and regarding the, the design here and then the reuse of this existing building. Existing landscaping around the perimeter of the site will generally stay the same. That's where the landscaping has remained the most healthy, but to meet current commercial design standards, additional landscaping is, is required. This PUD will include the addition of sixty-six new trees onsite. The majority of those will go to replace dead and dying trees that are currently there and weren't maintained. There are some new trees that are proposed, but there aren't existing one hundred and three trees onsite that are labeled as fair and healthy, and so those trees will remain. That's in addition to over a thousand low-water shrubs and ornamental grasses that will be added throughout the pedestrian areas and parking lot islands and to the medians of the site. Continuing on with the analysis, based on the proposed change of use and the addition of the gasoline service station, staff requested a traffic impact study with this PUD. The study concluded that signalized intersections within the study area would continue to operate at acceptable overall levels of service, which would be a D or better during peak hours, except at Dillon Road and McAsland Boulevard, which that intersection is anticipated to reach a level E service or a level of service E at the long-range peak PM hours, which is rated out to twenty forty-five. Unsignalized intersection movements are anticipated to be maintained at an acceptable level of service of D or better. Just quick note, D and E levels of service are considered acceptable levels of service. However, E is generally considered to be the limit of acceptable service or acceptable delay. The study recommends that the signal at Dillon Road and McAsland Boulevard be optimized once the site is operational to improve overall operations at the intersection, anticipate queuing, and then ensure a better level of service, again, when the site is fully operational. So we've asked for additional information in the traffic impact study about what the anticipated timing of that will be, but at this point, that would be the recommendation from the, from the traffic study. The study also recommends, based on anticipated volumes with the proposed uses on the site, that the eastbound left turn lane at Centennial Parkway and McAsland Boulevard be extended to accommodate additional vehicles queuing during peak hours. You can see in the graphic on screen, that is a, an aerial shot of Centennial Parkway running east to west, McAsland running north to south. You can see that left turn lane that would be turning left and northbound on McAsland. The applicant will need to modify that median and extend that queuing lane to accommodate the additional volume. Staff have included a condition as part of this PUD amendment approval. We're asking for civil construction documents, and then we'll work through a public improvement agreement to ensure that those, those improvements are satisfied as part of this PUD amendment and the subsequent construction.
Recording in progress.
Yeah, I think you lost the Zoom connection.
Oh, did I? Are we good?
We're back now.
Okay.
All great.
Continue on. I can cover anything that anyone might have missed online on that one. So yeah, again, continuing on with analysis here, the applicant is requesting two waivers to support the redevelopment of the site. The first waiver request is for relief from the maximum height of thirty-five feet prescribed by the commercial design guidelines. As part of the redesign to the main entrance, the applicant proposed a parapet feature that is thirty-eight feet, seven inches tall. Again, the maximum height is thirty-five feet. You can see the graphic highlighted in red, the portion of the parapet that would actually be exceeding that forty, that thirty-five-foot height limitation. As proposed, that parapet feature is one hundred feet wide. The building is just over five hundred feet long, so just a little scale for you on that. Staff support this waiver as requested as it allows for the adaptive reuse of the building and also contributes to the enhanced architectural design of the building. We also feel that the impact of the increased height is minimized because the, the building itself is set back so far from McAsland and quite a ways from the other four commercial properties there, so we feel that the impact will be minimal to other users and views from the right-of-way. The second waiver requested is for relief from the sign code specifically for wall signs on the renovated building and an electronic message sign that would be proposed on the canopy and specifically to standards that apply for single-tenant commercial users in commercial areas as our sign code is written. So there's some graphics provided on the screen that show the signs are a little bit hard to see here, but there are more details in the actual PUD that's included in the staff packet. I also have perspective renderings on the next slide that we can take a look at here. But right now, the sign code allows for a maximum of two wall signs to be located on either a primary, a secondary, or an alternative frontage for single-tenant commercial buildings. Within that requirement, the size of the signs are limited to one hundred square feet on a primary frontage and then one hundred square feet on a secondary or alternative frontage, so a total of two hundred square feet for single-tenant commercial users. The applicant has made a request for five total wall signs on the site, and with that, I have some additional information here that the applicant provided as far as what those sizes of signs will actually be. Let me just pull that up here quickly. We'll keep going as this pulls up. Sorry, just a minute. So currently, the sign code, so we'll, I'll, I'll talk about the, the wall signs here. This just came up for me. I apologize. So on the south elevation, which is the Dillon Road elevation, which per the sign code is actually considered the primary elevation, all right, the applicant is proposing a hundred and ninety-two square feet of signage. You can see it's, it'll be those pickup signs that are, that are proposed here. We'll be able to see it in renderings on the next slide. The west elevation, which would be the Century Place elevation, would also be a pickup sign. You can see it in the bottom, in the bottom rendering here. That would be a hundred and ninety-two square feet, again, advertising their customer pickup areas. The east elevation would be interior and alternative. That would be their primary King Supers Marketplace sign. They're proposing three hundred and sixty-seven square feet for a total sign area of seven hundred and fifty-one square feet. Again, we're looking at a building that's, that when all said and done, will be just over a hundred and thirty thousand square feet in size. So that's the applicant's request for relief from the wall signs that have been proposed. The applicant's also requesting a waiver to an electronic message sign on the canopy of the fueling station. Currently, our sign code only permits an electronic message sign for a gasoline service station on a monument sign or a freestanding sign, so that'd be a sign that's mounted in the ground away from the building, adjacent to a right-of-way that would advertise fueling pricing. So there, the applicant is proposing a monument sign with this particular PUD that would be on the south side of the site on Dillon Road. There's actually an existing monument sign there right now. The applicant would modify that sign, add an electronic message sign to it. They are allowed to do that, but that would be on the south side of the site. The applicant is proposing an electronic message sign on the north side canopy, so it'd be facing north for users and consumers that would be coming into the site from the north from Centennial Parkway, most likely, to advertise fueling prices. So again, we're considering a site with seven different access points. That's thirteen point five acres in, in size. So I will move on here, and again, the applicant has provided some perspective renderings of what that final signage package may look like. The top rendering would be from a northeast perspective. Middle rendering would be from generally a southeast perspective, and then that bottom rendering would be, looks like, from a southwest perspective. So you can see what they've proposed from a signage standard. A detailed analysis of the sign waiver criteria is obviously provided in, in the staff packet, but I think based on the overall size of the building, the site at thirteen point five acres in size, staff do support the sign waivers as they're proposed. We feel that they allow visibility without overwhelming the facades, and they maintain a balanced proportion while helping preserve the architectural integrity. So again, staff support these sign waivers as they've been proposed. In addition to the waivers, the applicant has also requested a parking reduction, and so a parking reduction is separate from the waivers. Per commercial development design standards, this site would be required to provide six hundred and fourteen parking spaces for, again, a, a building that's just over a hundred and thirty thousand square feet in size. As you all know, that comes from our commercial design guidelines. Four point five parking spaces per one thousand square feet of a commercial building. The existing parking onsite is five hundred and fourteen spaces, if you recall. With the addition of the gasoline service station, the proposed parking onsite will be four hundred and forty-eight spaces. I believe twelve of those would be ADA spaces or accessible spaces, so that is inclusive of the four hundred and forty-eight. Based on discussions with the applicant regarding the nature of their business and the nature of the use, the anticipated hours of operation, customer flow, and then also evolving shopping habits of consumers, which include dedicated curbside pickup, which the applicant is providing dedicated space here for, and delivery service, staff find the proposed number of spaces at four hundred and forty-eight is appropriate to adequately serve the use, and we do support the request for a reduced parking in this particular scenario. And that concludes staff's presentation, and so with that, we recommend approval of resolution number three, series twenty twenty-five, recommending approval of a planned unit development amendment to allow a grocery store and gasoline service station use with the following conditions, that the applicant will provide public improvement plans and finalize a development agreement to complete the storage extension of eastbound turn lanes in Centennial Parkway in accordance with the recommendations of the provided traffic impact study, that the applicant will apply a parking reduction request note to the cover sheet of the PUD in line with the PUD amendment requests in front of you tonight. The applicant will apply waiver language on the cover sheet of the PUD detailing the full scope and extent of the requested sign waivers as they've been presented in the staff report, and that the applicant will work with staff to finalize the location of EV charging stations as required with the establishment of a gasoline service station, which is again, a requirement of the supplemental use standards for gasoline service stations. And so with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. The applicant is online this evening and is prepared with the presentation as well.
Great. Thank you. Open it up for questions. Commissioner Mahaly?
Thank you for the presentation. Just, I want to clarify in detail, make sure I have it right. So the four hundred and eight, sorry, the four hundred and forty-eight proposed spots, that does not include the spots, that number does not include the spots dedicated for the pickup area?
I don't believe it does. We'd, we'd have to ask the applicant, but I do not believe it does. No.
That, that was my understanding, and I think you said that to it towards the end. I just wanted to confirm that detail, that they're separate dedicated for the pickup area.
I believe so. I would, I would like to confirm that with the applicant if we can.
Yes.
Okay.
And, and then, sorry, another, if you could go to the map of the property, I'm thinking of the road between, it runs north-south. It's, it's not a city street, but it's the road that dumps in, from Dillon into Centennial Parkway.
Yes.
It's the eastern boundary of the, of the map you're showing. Whose responsibility is that roadway?
That's ours. That's a, that's a public right-of-way.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Additional questions?
Yeah, I had one planner post. The, my question is about the, in the traffic study. I want to say, if I'm remembering right, I saw that this, that, that at build-out, a complete build-out, that this would be generating, I want to say that reports at ten thousand daily trips? Okay.
Yeah, we, we, we commented on that, and we are waiting on a response from, from, from the applicant on that. We felt that that number was high. That's more than half the population of the city of Lewisville.
Yes.
And so we asked for clarification on that particular number. We, the applicant can probably provide some detail on that. We feel that that, that may not be an accurate number. Again, it's more than half the population of the city, so.
Yeah, it, I was just curious about how that many people would funnel through the site. So anyway, yeah, be interesting to hear that.
So that, yeah, so just, so, so that is an outstanding comment that we've issued to the applicant. We do do that occasionally with engineering. to the applicant, we do do that occasionally with engineering items, right, where we feel it's appropriate to take something forward, again, we felt that that was, that it was still appropriate to move forward with that in the traffic study.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Questions?
Matt, thanks for the presentation, I have a couple of questions that I'm not super familiar with in terms of the detail of, of some of our requirements. If you would mind, go to the page where you have the renderings, that one exactly, you calculated a pretty significantly high number in terms of this, the area for the signage above and beyond kind of the allowable size. In, in these images, what is calculated as part of that signage, what's sign versus iconography versus just how we paint our building?
So, we will, some, some sign ordinances will take just a rectangle and all extents of that sign will fit within that rectangle, we actually do not do that, we will, we allow a reasonable, a reasonable shape to be drawn around the sign using right angles to determine the area of the sign. So it does, we, there, there is likely some additional analysis necessary to determine whether or not that 767 square foot number is the actual number, we generally see those details on a full sign permit application that comes in, right, which is not necessarily part of the PUD amendment process, so to answer your question, it, it would be, I don't, I don't know what, whether or not the method of measurement that we've applied, that we would apply was actually applied by the information that the applicant gave me, we would determine that at a, at a future date, so.
Okay, thank you. While we're on signs, I, I wasn't, I couldn't remember if we have limitations in this area particular, in particular about the lumen limits on digital signage and electronic signage?
We don't, we don't have lumen limits, no, but we will apply photometric standards from the commercial design standards. There, there are limitations on the types of lighting that can be applied, so LED lighting, internally illuminated lighting, which some of the lighting is internally illuminated LED, those would be permitted sign types in the commercial district, but to answer your question, if, if we, we will ask for a photometric metric if necessary to determine whether or not a sign is in conformance of their lighting standards.
Okay, thank you. And then last question, with the applicant's proposed accessory automotive service station for the fueling station, I, I know the answer to this question, if it were a standalone gasoline station, but because it's an accessory to the primary retail use, are the required EV charging stations also required to be within the limits of what the accessory service station is, or do they apply to the overall retail location?
My read of the code is they apply to just the accessory service station.
So those, those EV charging stations would have to be within the footprint of that fueling station?
That's not, that's not explicit in the code, but I do believe that the intent of the ordinance is to provide an alternative source, and I, and in my, in my opinion, and again, read of the intent of the ordinance, I do feel that they need to be in the general vicinity of, of the gasoline service station use.
Okay.
And so that's part of what the addition, the condition was that we applied there was we'd like to work through where those are located and with your insight and feedback this evening, we may be able to work that out.
Okay, thank you.
So the, the, the number of EV charging stations is a function of the number of pumps, there's, I thought we had a requirement based on the size of the facility itself?
The, the way the code reads, it reads specifically the number of, of pumps, and so there's five pump islands proposed, two pumps both island, 10 pumps, so.
So no requirement for the store itself?
No requirement for the store itself, no, so, so yeah, if you're referring to the EV, just our general EV code requirements, I don't believe that we've applied EV standards, our EV code standards to PUD amendments, we discussed that as a staff prior, and I think that's been the consistent application that we've taken forward, so.
Okay. I have one other question on the signage, the illumination, do we have requirements in terms of hours of illumination for signage?
I'd have to look in the sign code, I'm not sure, but I can, I can look in there and let you know.
Any additional questions, Commissioner Mahaly?
Following up on my previous question, so I don't think I saw it in the traffic study when I looked at it, and I don't think I heard you say it, but I mean, there was talk of optimizing the Dillon and McCaslin light intersection, has there been any such consideration of doing the same thing on the Centennial Parkway, McCaslin?
We, we haven't discussed it as a staff, as it was in a recommendation of, of the impact study, so it, it hasn't been discussed, no.
So having quite a bit of experience with intersection, I, I think we should consider it, I, I, I think the extension of the left turn lane is essential, but I'm, I'm wondering if that would be sufficient, and so I would, we can talk later, but I'm just wondering if that's on the table, so. And then second question, has there, similarly, has there been any discussion on improvements to that, that road that we maintain, the north-south one between the, the properties? I know that road is, you know, maybe it's been improved in the last year or so, but I know there's quite a bit of water pooling there when it rains, and it's, it's quite easy to bottom out your vehicle there, and we're going to be seeing a lot of traffic on that road now. So is that, has that been considered at all?
There's, and any improvements to that entire stretch of, no, there's not, to my knowledge, no, our Public Works team has not required or considered any improvements to that roadway with this application.
Thank you.
On that, on the, what, so when would the traffic study be triggered that would require the signal re-timing and hit for either of those?
I would, I would, I would defer to the applicant on that, I would have to imagine, just based on some experience, that it would be additional volume considerations based on the use, so I think we can, if the applicant's engineers online, that may be a good question for them.
Additional questions? Seeing none, thank you very much, great presentation, we can welcome the applicant to make your presentation, looks like you've been unmuted, hello?
Hello, my name is Dan Kraus with Galloway. Matt, thank you so much for the incredibly thorough presentation, to be honest, I don't know that we've got anything in addition to your presentation and ours, but we do have staff online, civil engineers, traffic engineers, architects, as well as representatives from King Supers that'll be available to help answer some of the questions that have come up. I could speak a little bit to some of the signage clarification questions, and then we could touch on the traffic as well, if you guys have anything specific that you'd like to cover.
That sounds great, yeah, if you want to go ahead with answering some of those questions, we'd appreciate it.
Sure thing. Matt, one thing, in your presentation, you mentioned the sign square footage for our building frontage that we're proposing with our architectural waiver, I believe that could have been the existing square footage for the existing approved PUD, if I'm correct, we were looking to propose something that's slightly different, it would be a net difference of a 27 square foot addition to the grand total that you presented a few minutes ago, where the numbers that you presented, Matt, were on Dillon Road, our south frontage was 192 square feet, we would have no change to that Century Place, which would be our west frontage, which is the secondary, the existing would be 106 square feet, I believe, was the existing, and we are reducing that to 86. The internal road or the private access on the east facade, I believe you had that one listed at 133, excuse me, 300, I think that was a 300 square foot, and then we're going to increase that one to 500, then the north frontage would be no change, so the net difference would be a 27 square foot addition. Beyond that, I think the only other comment that I would like to make on the digital pricing sign on the fuel canopy is that that is oriented to the north specifically so that it's inward focused for the site, so the King Supers customers will be captured with that signage specifically, as opposed to having that outwardly focused to our neighbors or also the traffic on the perimeter streets. So that's directed specifically for the King Supers customers to capture them going in and out of the store. So with that, I would turn this over then to Brian Haran, who is our traffic engineer, who can help explain some of the questions that you guys have presented with the traffic study.
Thanks, Dan, and thank you commissioners for letting me answer some of these questions, I've jotted them down, but if I miss anything, please let me know. The, I'll start with the daily, average daily trip generation from the study, you're correct on the figure, it's about 10,000 ADT. One important thing, or several important things to consider when we do traffic studies, trip is a singular direction, so it's, it's often confused with number of people, so it's how many trips into the site and out of the site, so some more, maybe a more accurate way to think about it is, half of that number is the number of vehicles, and that's over a 24-hour day, so it includes not just the employees and customers, but deliveries and things of that nature over a full 24 hours. The other thing is, we are using a national database of trip generations, the Institute of Transportation Engineers, so ITE, and these tend to be conservative rates, we want to assume sort of a worst-case scenario, so that any improvements that come out of this analysis will be accommodated for sort of a worst-case condition, so I hope that helps a little bit on understanding that number. In terms of the timing for the signal optimization, so the study shows that the signals will work fine at build out, but we assume year over year that there's sort of a linear amount of growth, so every year there's more and more and more and more traffic, and so this long-range analysis shows that in the PM peak hour, it may degrade to level of service E, and so the recommendation is based on sort of a continuous monitoring, and you know, growth doesn't always occur in a very linear fashion, so this may never come to pass, so the recommendation is just as, you know, if, if McCaslin does increase significantly over a 20 or 20-year period, an optimization will bring the levels of service back down to level of service D, so we've, we've shown that that optimization would work as a solution. And we did look at both of those signalized intersections to, to confirm that these levels of service would be maintained, and then the, I'll also add that Century Place, which is that eastern, or the western frontage road that some discussion has, has gone about, that, the intersections on both sides of that road were included in the traffic study, so there is traffic data available for use in any sort of evaluation that, that may need to be done for that roadway.
Thank you very much. Concerning the, the condition that would look at having the study and, and re-timing that intersection, what would trigger that?
The, it's really if, that if growth continues to occur along McCaslin, again, we kind of look, we do these studies in a very conservative manner, so we're making an assumption that year over year, traffic gets more and more and more, which would mean area projects or regional development occurs, and we know that this doesn't always happen, sometimes growth is flat, sometimes there's a decline, you know, depending on how areas develop. So on a long enough timeline, if, if we keep getting traffic on, on McCaslin, we would want to just re-time the signals to, to allow more green time for one approach or another, you know, and we don't know what that might look like, because 20 years into the future is, anything could happen, you know, we didn't, we didn't predict a pandemic, you know, you never know what, what could sort of change traffic patterns, so we're just making, bringing awareness to, these intersections can be accommodated by a re-timing, and no additional infrastructure would, would be needed to bring them sort of back to acceptable levels.
Thank you. Any additional that the presentation the applicant would like to make?
I have a quick question on traffic, can I ask that? So the, the traffic study, dare I say, kind of focuses on the obvious exits from the site, there are other exits in terms of, folks could turn left on Centennial instead of turning right to access McCaslin, and access McCaslin at a different point further north, is that factored into the study, AKA a rat run being created because of the backup to gain access to McCaslin?
Yes, actually, we, we went through a scoping process with staff and talked specifically about all possible routes, sort of in, into and out of the site, and which intersections would be the most impacted, and so the sort of seven intersections that you see here are the ones that we determined to be the most impacted, and, or why they are included in the site specifically.
And the, the proposal to extend the left-hand lane is, that's on Centennial, not on Dillon?
It's on Centennial, yeah, it's correct, Centennial eastbound left at McCaslin, so an eastbound to northbound movement, there's kind of a, what I would call like a shorter left turn lane, and we saw that the site trips from the site would benefit from some additional storage there, so the length that we are proposing would accommodate the future queues there.
Okay, and I presume that's limited by junction two, you could only go back a certain distance?
Correct, and we don't, it doesn't extend into that intersection, there's enough space between the two to accommodate the volumes.
Looks like we would lose some vegetation by doing that though as well.
Correct.
Additional questions? Please, Commissioner Troy.
A couple of questions for you, this, these ones are not necessarily, well, these ones are not traffic-specific questions, so I don't know who on your team might be able to answer this. Related to the re-landscaping of the site, it was identified that there would be a proposed high number of trees, water, water-savvy shrubs, and some ornamental grasses, can you confirm that there wouldn't be any addition of just plain turf areas or any tree lawns associated with any of the new trees that are, that would be on the site?
Yes, that is correct. The proposed landscape plan is to bring the site up into compliance based on the previously approved PUD, and in doing so, we would be replacing some of the native, excuse me, the non-native species that are now labeled as invasives, as the palate has grown over the years, replace those with approved species, but we are not proposing to add any new turf areas, just replace what is existing up to what was previously approved.
Okay, thank you. One other question, there's been a request for variance on the height restriction to put another three feet on top of the parapet wall at the main entrance, what would be lost or what damage would occur to the, to the idea of the development if that waiver was not granted? Is that a particular brand standard that comes with the King Supers facade, you know, three feet on top of 35 seems interesting to ask for a waiver for, what, what would be lost if that wasn't granted?
Sure, that's a great question. The initial request to increase the height of the building was so we could extend the parapet on that front entrance, primarily to screen the improved rooftop equipment, since the site was, the building was historically a hardware store, we're proposing the fuel, excuse me, the, the grocery station, wow, I can't get this straight, the grocery store with the fuel station, I'll get there, I promise. The rooftop equipment is being upsized for the grocery store requirements, so the increased units on the roof, this increased height in the parapet will help with that screening. And then if we're able to do that on the front facade, we're able to incorporate that into the brand identity of King Supers, as opposed to having a separate screen that might be mounted in, in another place on the roof, or another solution that we would be looking for to screen the rooftop. the rooftop equipment per the intent of the Louisville Code.
Okay, so has that, have those RTUs and the rooftop equipment already been specified?
I would turn that one over to Mark Breitz, if he's on the call. He's with our architectural team. One second, Mark, are you on?
Yeah, excuse me, yeah, I'm here. The, we have got all the RTUs and the refrigeration units up on the roof. We're working on getting all of those placed to coordinate the best screening that we can. And the height that's there that we're proposing actually is very similar to the blue metal that's on top of the Lowe's, the old Lowe's building right now. So we raised the parapet to actually match what was already there. It is a little taller than what's currently there building-wise, but there is that metal lattice work above. So we're actually in line with that. But we are, as Dan said, using most of that to try and screen as much of the refrigeration equipment and additional HVAC equipment that wasn't on the Lowe's building.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions for the applicant? Seeing none, I will now open up public comment. As we do that, if we can have a motion to add addendum one to this evening?
So moved?
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right. We have about 15 people participating online again here. If you would limit yourself to three minutes. And we have, is this another item? Okay, thanks. Great. Beginning to see a hand up there, thank you. So, yeah, please limit yourself to three minutes and begin with stating your full name and city of residence, if you would. Use the raise hand function in the online portion of the meeting, or if you're participating by phone, please use star nine.
Doug Van Riper, do you want to?
Yes. Okay, thank you.
My name's Doug Van Riper. I'm here for Murphy's Tap House and 585 McCaslin, property directly adjacent to the proposal. My city of residence is Nywha. We have concerns regarding the gas station. As you might imagine, it's directly adjacent to our outdoor dining area. And there are concerns with it being a gas station. There are some concerns with the layout. I think I handed in, I gave Matt a copy of this. I'm just basically going to read it and let you know what we're thinking. The gas station would be uphill from our back door. And it's also directly adjacent to the dining area that's outside there. So we have noise, light, air pollution associated with a 10-pump vehicle gas station with LED signboards. We have an outdoor thriving dining area, and we just feel like this could impact that negatively. The plans submitted to the city show no additional trees or vegetation that I could see between us and the gas station. So largely, we'd be looking at a gas station eating dinner. Not our favorite idea. Plans submitted also show a seven-foot drop from the west side of the gas station plat to the east side coming towards us. And that slope continues. It continues at least another seven-foot drop down to our back door. When it rains hard, the layout funnels all the water from that gas station plat directly at us. It comes across the opening, which is directly across from our opening, and rushes in, and three times in the 10 years we've been there, we flooded. It wasn't so bad when it's a nursery up there, but a gas station's kind of a different animal. We have concerns about that. I don't see a plan for perhaps a curtain drain between us and the gas station. We also see that the storage tanks underground are directly between us, above us, coming down from the gas station. So those are our big concerns. We'd like maybe some discussion on that. We kind of wonder if there's a need for a gas station. We just got one, one door down from us, as you guys know. So we'd like some consideration on those aspects as we proceed. Thank you.
Thank you. Entertained a motion to enter Mr. Van Riper and Perkins' letter into the public record.
So moved?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Looking online, I see one hand raised. Julie Everett? If we can unmute her. There we go.
Hi. So my husband and I own the Goddard School that's adjacent to the property on the north end, and overall, we're thrilled that King Supers is coming in there. Our only, my only concern is the location of the propane tanks on the north side of the building looks to be kind of close to our playground where we have two, three, and four-year-olds that don't move very fast if we have to evacuate. So that's my, I'm assuming they have to be located away from the gas station. But if you could just keep that consideration in mind as to the location of the propane tanks.
Great, thank you very much. Was there anybody else in the audience who wanted to speak to the issue at all? No, great, all right, thanks. All right, so I don't see any other raised hands. With that, then, we'll move on. Open it up for applicant response and closing statement.
Thank you again for staff, as well as the attendees of the hearing this evening, for the comments. We really appreciate it. So we will work with staff to ensure that the grading and drainage plans do sufficiently get the water in the runoff to the regional detention basins that are located on the southeast and northeast corners of the site. So we could also work with staff to identify ways that we can potentially address the screening and the impacts of the fuel station to our neighbors as well. And from there, we would also work with staff to address the potential locations of the propane tanks to our neighbors to make sure that we aren't proposing anything that will be a harm to them as well. So with that, I'd like to thank everybody again for their time this evening. We really appreciate your consideration.
Thank you very much. A staff response and closing statement.
I'll just cover a couple items quickly. Firstly, thank you to the applicant for correcting me on the signage piece. We had a couple-page document I was trying to read through quickly there. And so I will just state, and I didn't necessarily articulate this in the staff report of my presentation, but the previous PUD did have a pretty extensive allowance for signage. We've since adopted a new sign code in 2019, and the amendment requires us to come into conformance with the sign piece there. So just wanted to clarify that piece, so thank you again for that, Dan. Secondly, mechanical screening. We did discuss with the applicant screening requirements there. Mechanical screening in the commercial district can actually go up to 42 feet tall. However, our interpretation of the parapet is that it has to meet the standard building height, which is 35 feet. And so the applicant had indicated previously that part of the parapet design was to screen some additional mechanical equipment that would be back there. And I believe that would be, that would be it for me. Thanks.
Do we have additional questions for the applicant or staff as we move into our deliberations? Yes, Commissioner Haley?
So regarding the number of parking spaces, you know, a rationale was given previously about net being consistent with what they thought the anticipated use was. But could you provide any context for how the number of spaces proposed relative to the size compares to the observed usage from other King Super marketplaces in the area?
I think I'll defer to the applicant and the applicant team on that question.
I think that's a great question. Let's see. To my understanding, it's mostly speaking to the transition and how shopping has evolved. Lose, I think I could speak to it pretty highly, but then I'd ask Carl to see if he has any additional insight on that as well. But to my understanding, it's mostly in the transition where people are spending a little bit less time in the stores, doing their own shopping, a little bit more time, placing the orders and going through the pickup. So that there's an understanding where we believe that there is going to be a slight reduction in the required parking for that use specifically. So Carl, I don't know if you've got any other information you could add to that possibly?
Yeah, no, thank you, thank you, Dan. Carl Schmidtline with Galloway. And thank you, Chairman and Planning Commission members here this evening. Yeah, I think Dan summed that up pretty well. But in regards to experience with other locations, generally, that number, that number of parking spaces per thousand square feet of grocery store is generally anywhere from about three and a half to four. I would say, you know, 10 years ago, that ratio was close to five per thousand. And what we've seen is that trend kind of come down. And as they've learned more and more what the shopping experience looks like, they've reduced that parking demand that they look for to be closer to that three and a half to four per thousand. And also, you know, one of the other trends, the question was asked earlier, and I can't recall if we addressed that or not, but it does sound as though the online parking spaces that are provided there on the south side of the building, that is not included in the parking count, so that would be in addition to it. But that's where they've also kind of seen some of the shopping trends, too, and they've tried to adapt. And having those spaces there on the south, that also somewhat helps to reduce the demand of the parking spaces within the parking area in front of the store.
So if we're talking about evolving trends, what consideration, I know it's not a requirement, but what consideration was given to additional EV charging stations, given just how many parking spaces there are?
Carl, would you maybe be able to handle that one as well?
Yeah, and I think the intent there was that we were just trying to comply with the code requirements and working with staff and what, you know, Matt, and working with him through the application that indicated were required. So I think, I think that's where, you know, putting in the two EV charging stalls was proposed at this time.
Is that, in your opinion, I mean, is that consistent with anticipated trends?
Yeah, I don't know if I can comment on that necessarily. You know, what, you know, Kroger's corporate, you know, policy is on that. You know, I do know that they do continue to reinvest capital and money into their existing stores. And in generally, as they, they look at, you know, remodeling stores, they're always looking at different trends that they do see and how they can better service the customers. And so in those instances, those provide future opportunities to continue to look for more locations. I just, I, we've got, I know, I don't know if some of the Kroger representatives are on here, but I just got a text message real quick, so I just wanted to share this. It sounds like from the King Supers facility engineering construction manager, she's mentioning that they are planning eight EV charging stations at this location, although we can, we only have two shown presently.
Okay, thanks. Looks like we have a hand up as well, is that?
Thanks, yeah, I think we can recognize the additional online participant.
Yeah, you got Nick Tompkins here. Oh, and it shows up as my Kroger ID. I'm sorry, I'm the King Supers real estate manager.
Okay, great.
And I would say in regards to EV charging, you know, it's been an initiative across the board for us for quite a while. We do have kind of what I'd call preliminary EV chargers that we add to meet city code. But overall, we usually see a lot of EV groups show up after a store is open, once they can understand its sales and traffic counts a little bit better. And then we have a program that's specifically designed to go back in and add in EV chargers once those third-party groups show interest.
Great, thanks. Any additional questions? Oh, yes, please.
Just additional information. I think it does fact, you know, it may be useful context from a parking discussion and flow. But what, what drives the current design location for the gas station as presented? I could guess, but I'd rather hear what your thoughts are and why the gas station was located where it is.
Sure. I'll jump in on that, or Nick, Nick, if you're still on, if you want to maybe comment to that. Then maybe I can start, and then you can add to it. But, you know, primarily, they, they look at locating the fuel away from the store entrance in the outer parking field. And oftentimes, it's located more on the pharmacy end or the general merchandise of the store. And so the way the footprint or the floor plan and fixture plan of the interior of the store, this is set up to be a right-handed store. And so what that means, as you enter the store, you go in a counterclockwise direction. So you go in, and then you go to the right, and that's where you see your produce. You go through your bakery area. And that's kind of very common and typical of many of the King Super stores along the front range. So that's what they call a right-handed store. They, that's kind of a, and so a lot of the customers have a feel for where items are located when you have similar floor plan inside the stores. And so with that, with the marketplace, more of the general merchandise is located on the left side of the store. And so the thought process with the location of where the fuel facilities proposed is away from that customer entrance. So it's more on that south side and closer more to the general merchandise side of the store. But Nick, feel free to add any more to that, too.
No, no, spot on, Carl. And just going along with that, you know, we kind of have the, I'm going to call it the vehicular area down here to the south, and then more of the shopping coming into the store up to the north. So I think the thought is, up to the north is parking and walking in. But if you're there for pharmacy pickup or grocery pickup or hopefully grabbing some gas on your way out, that's more directed away from where people are crossing the main drive to get into the store.
Thank you.
Yeah, please, Commissioner Troy.
Thank you for that. With that additional information, the proposed location of the fueling stations adjacent to the south detention pond, are there additional considerations in what your proposed design includes for containment above and beyond where, or above and beyond what would be included if that was located further away with a greater distance of impervious pavement away from a detention area? Essentially, if a spill happens there, how are you making sure it doesn't get in the detention pond?
Carl, I'm going to let you roll that one as well, but I would say that we are currently working with staff with our construction, our civil construction designs right now. And then, and we will have a solution for that. Carl, do you have anything specific we would offer to propose at this time?
Yeah, I mean, the, and I guess the spill would be, where would you, where would the spill be? Are you thinking the spill would occur closer to the tanks, you know, maybe? Or where, where are you anticipating some sort of spill?
Sorry, I guess my comment was, if a spill occurs, if the fueling site is further away from a detention pond and you have more impervious pavement, you have a greater opportunity for containment before it gets into anything where it's harder to mitigate against as it, as it, you know, infiltrates other soils. If it's adjacent to the detention pond and a spill occurs, there's a higher chance that then you're dealing with a larger remediation after it gets introduced to some of the, you know, adjacent earth.
Sure, sure. No, thank you for that clarification on that. And there are, you know, two ponds located. There's a pond located on the north end of the site as well, too. And there's one located adjacent to the fuel facility there on the south end. And I'm just kind of looking at the plan here, so if I'm looking to the side here, just at my notes here. I mean, essentially, you know, we can put in additional measures. I guess if that's what you're possibly recommending, we can work with the city engineer on additional mitigating measures, I guess, that we could do to prevent any concerns, I guess, with a spill that were to occur and go immediately into that adjacent area. So there would be options that we could consider and work with. adjacent area. So there would be options that we could consider and work with the city engineer on that, if, if I guess that's what is being asked here.
Okay, thank you.
Question for staff regarding, so the applicant indicated willingness to discuss a surface runoff and possible mitigation of visual isolation. Would you like that as a fifth condition, perhaps?
I think it's worth considering. I think the only challenge is, it's just a bit vague, but if we can work on, you know, maybe some agreed upon language, you know, and then also get feedback from the applicant's engineers on how reasonable that is, of course, because I'm not a civil engineer myself, of course, so I can't necessarily provide the appropriate response to that. But I think that that would be reasonable for us to, to consider, because we are still in that civil review process at the moment.
Yeah, and I'm thinking more about the, the water runoff. I'm, I'm not concerned with potential future possible spills, actually, but
Right, okay.
More about that, and then the screening from the adjacent site.
Yeah, and I think, I think the screening is, is an easy condition as well, yes.
But I don't know that we can give you a hard and fast requirement within that, though. It's a negotiation that we depend on you to work through with all concerned.
Absolutely. I think following conversation here, we can take that to the engineering group and then include that in any additional public hearings moving forward to City Council, and how that was specifically addressed with concerns from commission.
Great, thanks. Yes.
Just tagging right behind that, I think the condition would be something along the lines of including spill mitigation from gas pumps and runoff, if that helps.
That's one, yeah, possibility. I mean, would, does our code address this for other gas stations?
That would be in our engineering design standards that I am unfamiliar with.
Okay, yeah. And this isn't, of course, it has to meet code, right? And we haven't come up with this scenario for other gas stations. So we can discuss it further, but yes. Any other questions of staff before we close? Public comment? Yes.
I'm not sure if I'm asking this at the right place. I would like to also seek conditions regarding the propane tank location, the screening of the gas station, and general drainage. Is this an appropriate time?
We'll, we'll add that during deliberations, yeah. Unless you had any questions for staff of how you, how they would want that worded, but I think I heard from him that we can address screening and drainage.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll respond. I feel confident about the drainage piece again. If we can get some clear direction here tonight, take that back to the engineering team, and then again, address that specifically in council communication moving forward, and then even update you all on what the progress on that is, assuming this moves forward tonight.
Great. All right. Anything additional for the applicant or staff? All right, then. We'll now close public comment, public hearing, and the planning commissioners will deliberate on the evidence presented during deliberations. No further public comment or other testimony or evidence will be received. Who would like to begin? Please, Commissioner Basket.
So I am comfortable with this proposal, with the conditions proposed by staff and with the conditions that we've just been discussing. I think that the amount and location of signage is appropriate. When I first moved to Lewisville, I can't tell you how many times I drove past the store and circled around to find it again, just with the blank walls. They, it wasn't very, very helpful to do that. So I, I support that condition of the signage.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Troy.
I'm in general support of the application. I think the redevelopment of the space is something we've been looking for, for a long time, and I think it's an appropriate use for the type of building. I do believe that it's not necessary right now for Lewisville to simply have a sixth gas station. However, as an accessory use to the grocery store, I think that actually helps and facilitates that idea of, you know, having, having that sixth gas station right there adjacent to the grocery store, which I know would get utilized a lot, and having additional level three chargers in that area, which there currently are none, is a boon to, you know, the overall availability for, for supporting electric vehicles. I do like the applicant's approach to having a, a brand requirement or in some of their own corporate design standards for inclusion of additional EV charging based on, you know, demonstrated, demonstrated need. And I think having, while not necessarily required, as we've discussed, having, you know, even EV ready or EV capable built into the design to help facilitate that transition in the future would be desirable addition to what I would like to see as, as that future full design application. And I agree with the statement about the additional conditions for some of those other things that have been brought up and discussed this evening.
Great. Commissioner Mahaly.
Also, in, in general support and a few comments I can make, I, also in strong support of the, the conditions we discussed, which I'll talk more about in a second, screening, drainage, and the propane tank appropriate location of. I echo Commissioner Troy's thoughts about a sixth gas station. So I won't, I won't repeat them, but in, in very strong support of what Commissioner Troy said there. Regarding, you know, the, the traffic, I, I do see that, you know, this is part of, you know, I'm happy to see that there's some public improvement as part of this development for the left turn lane on Centennial Parkway. I, I do strongly suggest that we do consider looking at that traffic light as well, based on my experience. Doing so will also alleviate the impact on the Dillon-McCaslin intersection as well. And I, and I completely resonated with Commissioner Banks' thought of a, a rat run going north, because I've done that countless times coming out of the old Lowe's property. So I think that we do need to extend the attention and reoptimization from the Dillon-McCaslin intersection north as well. And I, and I, and I would, would strongly support that moving forward. Similarly, that road that runs between Centennial Park and Dillon, I would also like to see that as part of the public works improvement. Again, I'm basing my experience here based off of the few times I've gone to King Supers marketplaces elsewhere, but I, I agree with the assessment of the high number of trips. And I anticipate, if nothing is done, that road being a impediment to some of the flow through the area. And as I already noted, you know, if it rains hard there, you will see, you know, collections there, which will only add to the mess possibly of people trying to get in and out. So I would, I would like to see that added for consideration of addressing that road. I'm, again, I'm assuming it hasn't really, I have, I've certainly taken it less in the last year now that Lowe's hasn't been the last year and a half, or whatever, since Lowe's has left. But it's definitely been an issue for a number of folks I've, I've spoken to previously. Let's see. I'm also, I, I don't think the waivers for the signs are, I, I'm, I'm in strong support of that. I think it's actually an improvement. And in particular, the electronic sign, if, if we don't waive that, you know, it would suggest we would need to have a additional sign, which would only take away further parking spaces on the north side. So I think that point being made, I think having an electric sign is a, is a small price to pay. So full support, I think it, it certainly adds to the efficiency of, of the space from a high-traffic volume perspective. So yeah, and, and are we going to talk about the conditions?
You can propose one?
No, I mean, I'm full support of the, I think we should do what we can to mitigate a possible detrimental effect to existing businesses. So the screening in particular for the Murphys, I think, you know, let's, I, I, I'm happy to hear the applicant's open to, to pursuing options to do that, as well as the, I share Commissioner Troy's concerns about the drainage wall. So conditions on, on, on the drainage design, screening for existing businesses, and then also a safe location of propane tank, I, I think I would be in full support of adding those to, to this acceptance. Thank you.
Good thing. So I am wondering, are people wanting an additional condition regarding the propane tanks? I mean, ultimately, my hunch is that, again, there, it meets code for safety purposes.
Not, admitting I'm not, I would, I guess I would want to make sure, I did not think to read that part of the code before, but, you know, I, I am sensitive to the fact, and I'm, I'm sure I'm not alone here, that it is a school. And so I'm sure there's, there's considerations in the code to other businesses, but I think additional consideration, as noted, should be given the fact that it's a school with, you know, less mobile individuals in vicinity.
What are other people feeling on this one, specifically in?
On?
On propane?
Sounds like the applicant's willing to reconsider and move it
Yeah.
to, to an alternate location.
I'm working on a, or I'm, I'm thinking of a condition that's something like applicant and staff will work on landscape screening and drainage considerations with the property to the southeast or the Murphy's tap property, and then also reviewing propane tank safety. Something like that?
Is that going to work for you, Matt? Condition like that, yeah?
So I would just maybe add in there, and I want to be deliberate about how I say this. The location of the propane tanks, to me, from, from an engineering perspective, doesn't necessarily represent a significant safety hazard in and of itself. You know, there are things related to leaking propane, but there, there's a pretty, pretty large open area here that, that would, you know, help dissipate any, any leaking propane pretty quickly. You know, there are concerns associated with, you know, propane explosions or blevies where, you know, that can propel a large propane tank half a mile, and moving it another 200 feet really isn't going to make that much of a difference. I think, I think there is a concern just about kind of the, the visibility and, and the, and the aesthetic nature of it. And I don't want it to be something that represents a concern, again, impactful to the adjacent businesses because of just the perception of it. So I think having something that addresses the idea of screening for aesthetic purposes, and I, the only reason I say this is because you originally started out by talking about some additional condition that focused on the applicant addressing safety issues, which it absolutely should be, and that's kind of what code addresses, but maybe having the applicant address aesthetic or architectural concerns would maybe be how I would reword it, just.
Yeah, boy, I didn't mean, I don't have safety written in front of me, so that, or just at the end. But yeah, I didn't, that was a lesser concern of mine, probably as well. I'm just, I'm just trying to craft a condition that captures everything all in one and let the applicant and staff
Work through, work through the problem, yeah.
Work through all three of those issues, the screening with the property to the southeast, the draining, drainage considerations with the property to the southeast, and then is there something that the applicant and staff can do with regard to review of propane placement? And I would be, as maybe you were alluding to, Commissioner Troy, if this seems like a fine and safe location where it's proposed, I would be fine with that, you know? Leave it to the experts kind of situation.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. You're comfortable with that?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you, Troy.
Excellent.
Chair Brownice, you have a hand raised?
I'm sorry, unfortunately, oh, it's a panelist. Unfortunately,
It's the applicant?
It's currently closed. Yeah, the applicant, unfortunately, it's currently closed, so we can't really take that into account. Okay, thanks. Thanks. All right, continuing on.
Yeah, well, sorry.
No.
Yeah, maybe, and I would just say, I've, I agree with all the previous commissioner comments, and I'm, I'm very excited that we're reusing a building here and, and not starting over and all the climate considerations that, that go with demolition and reconstruction of concrete and all that. So I'm excited for this project.
Yeah, generally supportive. Not, not too many comments to add to, to those that have already been made. Thanks for the prep. Thanks for all the information. Thanks for the willingness from the applicant to consider all the feedback and be as proactive as you have been in responding immediately. It is unfortunate that 50% of our gas stations will be within sight of one another in the city of Lewisville. Kind of ironic. I'm sure I understand King Supers business model enough to know why they need a gas station there, but it is unfortunate. Let's, let's leave it at that. And yes, the conditions we've applied, you know, adjacent businesses, I think we need to be very considerate of the impact to them. So otherwise, in support.
Great, thanks. I also find myself in support. Yeah, in addition to reuse of a building, it's really hard these days to reuse a big box building. I think we're really fortunate to have something that will drive sales tax revenue and also reuse the building all at the same time. I'm comfortable with the, the requests that have been made, and I think we're in a good place with the conditions as well, so.
Chair, do you want to hear from Commissioner Hunt?
Oh, yes, please, Commissioner Hunt.
Yes, thank you. I've been quiet. It's fine. Sniffly. And I don't really have anything more to add. I think everyone has been, has made really good points. I, I also am excited to see a reuse of this area. I live nearby, so personally, I'm kind of excited about it. And I, I do appreciate the willingness to address the concerns of, of the neighboring businesses. I think that's really important. And so I, I also am in agreement with the conditions that we've been talking about, but I am supportive.
Great, thank you. Dan, thank you, Commissioner Troy. All right, with that then, entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of a planned unit development amendment, King Supers Marketplace, consideration of Resolution 3 to approved a PUD amendment to allow grocery store and gasoline service station at 1171 West Dillon Road.
With five conditions?
With the, with the conditions that have been discussed.
Great. And you've captured that, you're comfortable, yeah? Great, all right. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Hunt with the second, all right. Can we have a roll call, please?
Krishna Mahaly.
Yes.
Krishna Troy.
Yes.
Krishna Basket.
Yes.
Krishna Moline.
Yes.
Krishna Bangs.
Yes.
Krishna Hunt.
Yes.
Chair Brownice.
Yes, the motion carries. It's weird, we don't get to say hello to the applicant in the room. Very modern of us, okay. Thank you all. Good luck with moving forward, working with staff, and moving on to City Council. All right, with
Thank you.
You're welcome. With that then, we will move into any planning commission comments. Looks like a possible discussion, update and discussion of a comprehensive plan next month.
Yes, I had a couple of things actually for Planning Commission. First, many of you know, we have a new city manager. She's starting on March 31st, just to make that official announcement. Her name's Diana. She's coming to us from California. And then the second thing I had for you all is a, is a question regarding a potential second meeting in April. We've got a high demand for several cases. We've got two land use cases, zoning code amendment we need to adopt to comply with state law, and then the comp plan discussion. So four items in one month is probably overload, but we want to keep these things moving forward. So I wanted to see if Thursday, April 24th, would work for a potential second meeting. How do you all feel about that?
Really trying to pack them in here in 2025, aren't we?
Sorry. It's a question.
Can we get back to you on that?
Sure, yeah. If you want to get, I can follow up with you offline about that.
Yeah, that'd be great. After the meeting, we can follow up, check our calendars then.
Yeah.
All right. Any planning commission comments? Anybody else want to share something now? All right. Seeing nothing additional then? Yes?
I'm sorry, I didn't speak up quickly enough. I attended the Commuting Solutions Breakfast yesterday, and that is a nonprofit that deals with transportation data and management and transportation in general, along the US-36 corridor and even beyond that. And they, the focus of the whole meeting was about rail. And it is very interesting that there's sort of more, some new sparks around that. The Front Range Passenger Rail, which is the proposed statewide rail from Fort Collins to Pueblo, is really looking to make a partnership with the Northwest Rail and build the rail all the way from Denver Union Station to Fort Collins. And what is significant is that proposal's been around for a couple of years now, but it always was conceived as long-distance rail, as Amtrak-type rail, where the stations would be every 10 miles or so. And in concession partnership, making it a little bit more interesting, they're now talking about adding three stations, one at Westminster, one in Brumfield, and one in Lewisville. in Lewisville. Now, it's not funded yet, there is, there are some revenue streams towards it that didn't exist previously, there is RTD interest that is blooming a bit more now, so I just wanted to put that on our radar screens that we, it's alive.
It is alive.
Yes.
Cool.
I also just wanted to share that I will be remote at the next meeting, and then in May, I will be gone on vacation, so.
Wonderful.
But I can make that meeting, other meeting in April.
Okay, all right, good, good, thanks. Well, and thanks for your passion to planning and commuting and sharing that information with us.
Chair, just for notation, following along, I will not be available at the June meeting.
Okay. Thank you, yes. Any additional commissioner comments? Seeing none, a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.
Recording stopped.